Doug Rucione Township Clerk, Tristan De Nortja Deputy Township Clerk, Thomas Rowe Deputy Township Manager, Scott Salmon Township Attorney, and Ron Goodman Volunteer Cablecaster. For the public's information, we are currently holding a Zoom meeting. If our Wi-Fi at the municipal building has an issue where the Zoom meeting drops, we will aim to retrieve the connection and recontinue the meeting. The next televised regular council meeting is being rescheduled to take place on Tuesday, November 21st at 6:30 PM for closed session. The public portion of that meeting will begin at 8:00 PM. Township offices are closed on Friday, November 10th in observance of Veterans Day. We will be having a Veterans Day ceremony on November 11th at 11:00 AM on the municipal green, rain or shine, to celebrate and honor our veterans. Fourth quarter taxes are due November 1st. If you have any issues with a tax bill, please contact the town manager or the tax collector at Town Hall. Early voting for the 2024, sorry, 2023 general election opens at the Rota Center, is open at the Rota Center until Sunday at 6:00 PM. And Election Day is on November 7th from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM. The mail-in ballot drop box is open at Town Hall until 8:00 PM on Election Night. There will be a poll worker meet and greet on Wednesday, November 1st from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM, and we encourage you to please join us. Council met in closed session earlier this evening to discuss the following: contract negotiations with the City of Englewood City Council, legal issues and opinions regarding items on the open session agenda, litigation updates, and Oprah. I would like to note for the public and our residents that this is a special meeting and not a regular council meeting, which means the rules for this special meeting will be a little different according to the recommendations of our municipal charter. While the format is similar, a special meeting helps us get to our council-listed items, good and welfare, and the consent agenda a little faster than usual, so that this council can conduct the township's business in a timely fashion. And when we get to good and welfare, which will be relatively soon, we will be selecting Teaneck residents first, so that we can hear from them first before opening it up to the rest of the public. And with that said, our first order of business is work session items.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to consider our peace and unity resolution.
I second.
Mr. Clerk, we have a first and second, sir?
Motion to consider, Councilman Schwartz, Councilman Belcher.
Yes.
Councilman Goldberg.
Yes.
Councilman Oregon.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Katz.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor G.
Yes.
Mayor Pagan.
Yes.
Motion to consider approved. This is Resolution Number 27... Apologies, this is Resolution 276-2023.
Floor is yours, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we vote to support the peace and unity resolution. And the reason we're doing this so early, we had substantial conversation about this at our last council meeting, and I think there was pretty unanimous support for the resolution. Folks just wanted to take a look at the wording and make sure that we were all in agreement with the language. So that's been done, and I am very excited to now vote to support the resolution.
I second.
Mr. Clerk?
Can we have discussion?
Absolutely.
I think there are a lot of resolutions that we have on the consent agenda or we move to the consent agenda, but we still listen to the public before we vote on them. And so by voting on it now before good and welfare, we have good and welfare specifically before we vote on resolutions, so that we can hear from the public. And I think voting on it now tells the public that we're not listening to their words. And it could be that they're all in agreement as well, but it's a very bad practice to start voting on things before we open it up to discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Oregon. Just so everyone knows, though, there is a first and a second. We're supposed to call the roll, but does anyone else on council want to make any comments? Mr. Schwartz?
I do have a response. I believe that we have exhausted a discussion about this, and I think that in good faith, because we presented this in the last council meeting, we have taken edits. At this point, I would like to take it to a vote.
I just also want to recognize that I usually agree with you, Councilman Oregon, that we should allow for good and welfare before we vote on anything. If we had not talked about this for hours at the last meeting, then I would agree to do that again tonight. But I feel comfortable, given that there was lengthy input on this specific resolution, and that the discussion amongst the council members was that we just wanted to review the language, make a few edits, until we were all comfortable, and I think we've done that.
If it's okay, Ms. Goldberg, I think I saw you raise your hand.
I'm gonna wait for this part of the conversation. I want to say something before we vote.
Okay, sorry about that, Ms. Oregon.
It's okay. The public didn't have the last copy of the resolution when we discussed it. And so there may be wording, and there may be things that they want to discuss. And I would just tell you, we're sitting in an empty room now, but there are over 300 people watching us. And so if the room were filled with people that might want to speak on this, we would listen to them. And I'm a yes for this if we vote on it after good and welfare, but I'm a no if we vote on it now, because this is not practice. It's not okay.
If I'm not mistaken, I'm gonna ask our attorney to chime in, because this is a special meeting. There are different rules. But there is a first and second on the floor.
Mr. Mayor, also I'm raising my hand as well.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Katz.
Listen, I hear what Councilmember Oregon is saying, and I do also understand the desire of council to put this forward. There's many people in the community that want to see this passed. I think that it will be passed. I would think it's, I'm a yes for it, and I'm a yes for it now, and I'm a yes for it later. I think to give the optics that we're, especially now that it's been brought up in public, that we're pushing this through without listening to the public is a rookie mistake. But I would suggest that we at least now listen to the public, but I'm a yes both votes, now or later.
I'm sorry, Councilman Schwartz, we're having trouble hearing you. I don't believe your microphone is on.
Um, I really think this is very important that we have seven, seven votes. And if that, and I'm a yes for this no matter what. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion, if I have to table it, to make a motion that we hear good and welfare first and then vote on it. And I understand your concerns. I understand everyone's concerns, but I really want seven votes. I'm a yes like Councilman, Deputy Mayor Katz.
I'm happy to wait as well. I just want to hear from Councilwoman Goldberg first before we decide.
Well, my personal opinion is I'm, I would, I think that we should do this now, but if I'm okay with going with the majority at this point, thanks. But I'm okay with voting now. I think I'm a little concerned, but I'm okay. But I want the majority, I want to see where the majority goes. If it means that it's 7-0, then we wait. But my personal opinion, if it's not 7-0 now and it's 7-0 after, then let's do it.
Thank you, Ms. Goldberg. Ms. Oregon, and then if I could hear from our attorney too. Ms. Oregon, go ahead.
I'm not trying to make trouble, but even though it's a special meeting, there's a reason why we have good and welfare before we vote. Okay, so let's just wait then. If everyone's okay waiting?
Well, actually, Mr. Salmon, can you chime in real quick? And then we'll ask the clerk and the attorney procedurally what happens next if someone wants to...
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So if the council would like to wait on it, we would need a motion, because we have a first and a second, we would need a motion to table. And that would be the next step, if the council wants to...
And Mr. Salmon, according to precedence of motions and Mr. Clerk, it would be the most recent motion that we would have to consider first, right? And if it passes, if it's tabled, then it's off. But if the tabling fails, then we continue with the vote, right? I just, I'm curious.
That's correct.
Okay. Ms. Belcher, you wanted to say something?
I simply want to say that I would, I would hope that by listening to our residents during good and welfare, voting before or voting after, I hope we would have a unanimous consensus among all council people.
That's what I'm telling you. I just, the procedure, the process of doing it now is not okay. It's not how we operate. We listen to the public for hours and hours.
It has my support. I helped work with both of you on it. I love it. And I'd like to make a motion that we go into good and welfare and then vote on it afterwards.
All right, so you're actually making a motion to table. Is there a second?
Make a motion to table.
No, there's no second.
Second.
Mr. Clerk?
Motion to table what is now Resolution 276-2023. Councilman Schwartz.
Yes.
Councilman Belcher.
Abstain.
Councilman Goldberg.
Abstain.
Councilman Oregon.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Katz.
Abstain.
Deputy Mayor G.
Yes.
Mayor Pagan.
Abstain.
Mr. Clerk, how many votes, yeah, yes votes was that? I want to make sure my math is right.
Can you give me the vote tally again?
We had an abstention.
We had several abstentions.
Yeah, we had, we had four abstentions. And three yes.
All right, can I change my vote to yes? Because I would like to see 7-0 vote on this if possible.
Attorney Salmon?
Yes, that would be okay. And I'm sorry. That would be okay, and yes, this would need, would need, the motion table would need four votes to pass, so.
And because we haven't moved on to the next order of business, I think I can change my vote, correct?
That's correct.
All right, so this is tabled until after good and welfare? That's what council wants?
Thank you so much.
All right, next order of business is old business. Does anyone on council have anything under old business? No? Seeing no hands? There's nothing under old business? Does anyone have anything under new business? Anyone on council? No? Moving forward, next order of business is communications. Does anyone have anything under communications? Anyone have anything under committee reports by council liaisons? Anyone? No? Council listed items, proposed resolution, peace and unity. Do we have to discuss it again, Mr. Clerk? No, because we already discussed it, right? So next order of business is the Township Manager's report. Mr. Kozinski, the floor is yours, sir.
Sure, just three quick things. Had a pre-con meeting last week with Mark Dennis from Teaneck Southern Little League and Athletic Fields of America. We worked out a few kinks, and work should begin within a month at Teaneck Southern. DPW is just finishing up all the tree replacements on Cedar Lane. That project came out very nice. And we also filed a complaint with the Inspector General's office on our missing mail. That was the fourth quarter tax report, tax bills.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Next order of business is Township Attorney's report. Mr. Salmon, do you have anything for us, sir?
I do not. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Salmon. Our next order of business is good and welfare. Any member of the public wishing to be heard at this time can please come forward and please state their name for the record. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person, and we're doing Teaneck residents first. So please let us know what street you live on in Teaneck before speaking. Thank you.
All right, bringing in Sandy Silverberg. Again, please state your name and address for the record.
I'm trying, oh, there we go. Okay. Good evening, council, Mr. Manager, neighbors. I'm speaking tonight afraid, but I have to stand up. I tried to speak last time, but I was timed out at the end. Thank you, Council Oregon, for this opportunity. My heart and mind go out to all of us who are suffering as a result of the unspeakable horrors that have occurred since October 7. Our notions are all understandably fraught with sadness, anger, hopefulness, hopelessness, and on it goes. We have no influence on the events in the Middle East and elsewhere throughout the world, but we have every influence on what takes place here in Teaneck. I hope that while I am of the opinion we could have chartered a better course initially, we can still take an action that is good, right, and just. We can live up to the much touted mantra that Teaneck is special, Henry's Oasis, a community where all can thrive and flourish. We are called upon now, as in 1954, when Robert Dupre sat down next to me in school. We're all facing a self-wrecking. Whom do we want to be? A woman said that her son was chased and beaten up in town because he was wearing a skull cap that identified him as Jewish. Another woman said that on her way to mosque for prayer, she was frightened for herself and her children because she was pursued by a car full of people, the radio blasting, following her slowly all the way to the mosque. Let us refuse to let this ever happen again here, and let us be mindful of what is happening to others. Not one person in this town need fear another one in this town. Let us try to listen. Let us embrace each other's humanity, pass this unity ordinance unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy.
Bringing in Emma Horowitz.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Hi, thank, thank you so much for having me. Emma Horowitz, Teaneck resident. Thank you so much for your service, all of you. I wanted to thank you again for passing the resolution of October 17th. In doing so, you recognized that the intentional murder of innocent men, women, and children is never justified, and you had the moral clarity and courage to look past audience members who attempted to suggest otherwise, that these killings were somehow complicated or part of a broader story, or that you weren't considering the history. In other words, that they were somehow justified. No, but with one clear unanimous voice, you said what needed to be said, that they were not justified. They can't be justified. This was especially important to me because I try to model leadership for my children. I try to show them that sometimes we have to do things that are hard because they are right, even when they may be unpopular with some people. You showed that leadership, and you continue to show it with your efforts tonight and your cooperation that I anticipate seeing later on the unity resolution. Thank you, and thank you to the Teaneck Police Department for continuing to keep everyone here safe, even when some try to make it difficult for you. In the merit of everything you are doing tonight, both the Teaneck PD and the town council, and of course Dean Kozinski, who knows I'm a fan, may the town begin to heal. With the balance of my time, I would like to read a portion of a poem that I think speaks very well to what you have done. If you can keep your head when all about you are losing theirs and blaming it on you. If you can trust yourself when all men doubt you, but make allowance for their doubting too. If you can wait and not be tired by waiting, or be lied, or being lied about, don't deal in lies. Or being hated, don't give way to hating, and yet don't look good nor talk too wise. If you can dream and not make dreams your master. If you can think and not make thoughts your aim. If you can meet with triumph and disaster and treat those two imposters just the same. If you can bear to hear the truth you've spoken, twisted by knaves to make a trap for fools, or watch the things you gave your life to broken and stoop and build them up with worn-out tools. If you can talk with crowds and keep your virtue, or walk with kings, nor lose the common touch. If neither foes nor loving friends can hurt you, if all men count with you, but none too much. If you can fill the unforgiving minute with 60 seconds worth of distance run, yours is the earth and everything that's in it. And which is more, you'll be a man, my son. I, of course, interpret man at the end there to mean leader and to apply to women equally. Thank you all so much for everything that you're doing for all of us here in Teaneck, and I pray that soon we will truly be at peace again, all of us.
Thank you, Ms. Horowitz.
Bringing in Heidi Fuchs. Please unmute whenever you're ready.
I thank you so much. I would first take this opportunity to thank Dean Kozinski, who's really been a huge contribution to our community and specifically to the Teaneck Police Department for really doing their best to keep the peace over the past period of time. I would like to say thank you to the council, every single member of the council for unanimously passing the resolution last week condemning Hamas. It's a little bit crazy that it's even whether a question to condemn Hamas since we, but we know the pressure that has been put on you, the propaganda, the bullying by those who support this type of terrorism, particularly with Jews as targets. We're thankful that you have had the courage to stand up for what is moral and ethical and right. I am excited to continue to raise my grandchildren in this community, and I feel that you will certainly serve their needs as well. When we see people, our neighbors, suggesting that Hamas's barbarism is somehow complicated or justifiable, it only reinforces the need for moral clarity. The intentional targeted and televised slaughter of innocent civilians is not complicated at all. It should be condemned by everyone, and I'm most grateful for you doing so. The vote last, I guess, October 17th was particularly meaningful to me, and I want to thank you. I have been deeply disillusioned by the political discourse in this country, in our town, and the increasing hateful and toxic environment that's been created. To see local representatives come together and take a stand for what's right in the face of threats and opposition makes me hopeful that we can achieve a peaceful future for our children, and in my case, our grandchildren. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Fuchs.
Paula Rogovin, please unmute.
Hi. I urge, I'm Paula Rogovin. I live on Linden Avenue. I urge a unanimous vote tonight for the unity resolution. I'm going to read a statement and then a poem that I've written. On October 17th at 5:30 PM, a few hours before the Teaneck council meeting, a diverse group of residents, each holding a small light, gathered in a circle for a peace vigil on the municipal green. After a few speeches, we sang, "All we are saying is give peace a chance." And before the vigil, some told us that it was too soon to hold a peace vigil. I asked, "When is it the right time to vigil for peace?" After 2,000 deaths, 3,000, 4,000, 8,000, 9,000 deaths, so many of them children, it's always time for a peace vigil. I personally think there should be immediate ceasefire in the Middle East, but that's not my ask of the Teaneck Town Council tonight. I personally think the town council should call for humanitarian aid. I personally think the town council should follow the lead of the young people from Teaneck High School who organized a dialogue and passed the unity resolution tonight. I have a poem that I'd like to read. I wrote it this week. Mothers of Teaneck, hear my plea. Thousands were killed on 9/11. Each had a mother. Some were mothers, and the grief and trauma from that horrendous tragedy linger. Then there was a rush to war in Afghanistan and Iraq. Millions displaced, hundreds of thousands of civilians injured or killed. So many children among them. Thousands of US soldiers and Marines dead from injuries or suicide. Each had a mother. Some were mothers, and the grief and trauma linger. Civilians are dying in Israel and Gaza, and so many children among them. Continued bombing, supplies of water, food, and fuel to civilians cut off. The grief and trauma are now. The grief and trauma know no borders, and the grief and trauma will linger. Nothing can be solved by war. Mothers, call for a ceasefire in the Middle East. Call for humanitarian aid for the people of Gaza. Call for peace in our beloved Teaneck.
Thank you, Ms. Rogovin.
Mr. Arif Khan, you are free to unmute.
Hello, good morning. Yeah, hi, good evening. This is Muhammad Arif Khan from Teaneck.
Yes, you have three minutes, whenever you're ready.
All right, good evening. First of all, I'd like to thank council members Daniel G. and Denise Belcher for introducing the peace and unity resolution a couple of weeks ago. Sadly, it did not get added to the consent agenda. Tonight, we are discussing the updated peace and unity resolution. I compared the changes between the two. It looks like the biggest change is the fact that the line that mentioned the number of lives lost has been omitted on the Palestinian side. I don't understand why that particular change was made. Israel has dropped 6,000 bombs in Gaza since the war began, 6,000. This is an official statement, by the way, from the Israeli Air Force. They wiped out buildings. Forget about buildings. They've decimated entire blocks. No regard for civilian life. Now, don't get me wrong, any civilian life should not be taken on any side. Let me make that very clear. Civilians should not be impacted. I condemn what Hamas did, and I am now condemning the disregard for Palestinian civilian life. Israel has asked a million people to evacuate within 24 hours, and then bombed the evacuation route. The number of Palestinian lives lost has actually increased from two weeks ago and now stands at more than 8,000 lives lost. Out of those 8,000, more than 3,000 are children. I want to let this sink in. More than 8,000 civilian lives have been lost, and out of these 3,000 are children. Council members, you had the opportunity to correct the wrongs committed on October 17th, and yet five of you, or a subset of the five, made it worse today by removing the line that has the number of Palestinian lives that have been lost so far. Frankly, this is disgusting, shocking, and humiliating. You are directly giving a message that Palestinian lives do not matter, and as elected officials, you are in breach of your duty. Again, this is directed towards the council members that have requested this change. We elected you as leaders, and we expect you to lead. We expect you to represent the entire community of Teaneck, and we expect much more from you. Do the right thing. Put the statement back in the resolution and update the count to reflect the current count. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Khan.
Jesse Leon, you're free to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Loud and clear, sir. Three minutes. Please state your name, address, and record.
Thank you very much. Jesse Leon, Teaneck resident. I read the, the new, the new version of the resolution, and the words are very nice. It's very pretty. I hope that it's true. I don't feel the kind of peace and unity that this resolution has been calling for. I think that a lot of people in the community don't feel that peace and unity right now, and I think it's very hard when we are in an almost Orwellian situation where we're passing a peace and unity resolution on the very same night that the Jewish community members are urged to stay away from the town council and not to demonstrate and raise their voice in support of something that's important to them, and that the local public library branch closed early because of fear of large protests in the parking lot there. I think that you're not going to have peace and unity when you have groups of people within the town inviting outsiders to come and agitate. Last week in Englewood, we saw six people arrested from four different towns that weren't from Englewood, who came to demonstrate and cause violence and destruction. And I, and I don't feel like we're going to have peace and unity here when that kind of situation can replicate itself. And from what I understand, so far tonight, it hasn't and probably shouldn't. But it's really disheartening that, that the call for that kind of imitation even went out to start with. So I really do, you know, I urged you guys to pass this resolution two weeks ago or a week and a half ago. And I, I'm a little bit more ambivalent about it today, to be honest with you. I expect that it will pass, and I expect that you should all vote for it. And I really hope that everyone listening tonight and every day going forward can honestly work and struggle with themselves and with each other to not make it just a hollow piece of paper that looks good for a town to pass. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leon.
Yassin Al Kariani, please state your name for the record for three minutes.
Yassin Al Kariani, Teaneck. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, staff. I'm gonna let you in on a little secret. When the Muslim community was planning the Iftar earlier this year, somebody wanted to put Palestinian awareness flyers on the table. And two of the organizers, myself included, said, "No, this event is for everybody in Teaneck, and we will not allow anything that can create division." I think that's wisdom and that's peace. But you, as a council, the first opportunity you received to divide us, you took it. You misconstrued moral for tribal. Up until October 17th, about 1,400 Jewish people died, and about 1,400 Muslims died. That's sad. But you told us, "Tonight is for the Jews. Give us tonight." You told us Muslims should wait. You found no room in your words to mourn Muslim deaths, just like you mourn Jewish deaths, and you even mentioned the numbers of, the number of casualties, like one of my predecessors just mentioned. This very resolution that you're discussing tonight, you didn't allow it to be discussed. And we all know that the language argument could have been sorted out earlier that same night in closed session. Ladies and gentlemen, as a collective body, you're not like me. I don't think you believe that a civilian life that is taken is a civilian life that is worth mourning. And frankly speaking, and I say, I say this with utmost sadness, I haven't seen anything more supremacist, discriminatory and nonchalant than that in Teneck. So now, all right, we have a resolution. Fine, thank you. Accept that it's two weeks late. It's fluffy. You, you, you just have to be mindful of something. As a council, you can't stab the Muslim community, then come to us two weeks later with Band-Aid. Thinking that we're gonna believe you care about our wounds. And to rub salt into those wounds, the updated versions, the version of, of this resolution that you have in front of, that you're gonna vote on tonight. Does not even mention the death toll. The Muslim casualties, maybe again, those Muslim children, elderly women are not as important as their Jewish cousins. Unity enough? Now I have a fair question to ask you, and I hope you give me an answer to it. What is the threshold of Muslim civilian deaths that we have to, to reach? So that those human lives can find room in your words? Give me, throw me a number, ten thousand, twenty thousand, thirty thousand, just tell us what the number is and tell us if it's subject to negotiation. Now, allow me to say one last thing, given the time that I still have. I hope, I hope that after all this nonsense is over. That a few of you can find wisdom in introducing an ordinance that prevents us from any involvement. In international geopolitics, because there is nothing good that could come out of that. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Al Kariani.
Henry Pruitt, please unmute. You are free to speak. Dr. Henry Pruitt, please unmute.
Um, did I unmute?
Loud and clear, three minutes, sir.
Okay. As I said before, what happens in Teneck will have no impact on the war in the Middle East. I am proud of this council. Because they have met their responsibility to respect the pain of both sides of this horrible war. And their effort to keep Teneck a safe place for everybody.
Thank you, Dr. Pruitt.
Thank you, sir. Bringing Keith Kaplan. Please unmute, state your name for the record.
Thank you, council. My name is Keith Kaplan, former councilman. I wanna thank our chief of police and immigrant, our men and women. Who are standing for all of our residents' safety every single day throughout the year and especially the township manager Dean Kozinski. Uh, as well as you guys. Every decision the council makes has an impact on the town. But the choice to have Dean lead the administration of this town was unquestionably. Through COVID, this and everything else, one of the most critical we've ever done. Paul, I asked who could be against peace? And for anyone that's read his words, and if you haven't, I suggest you check them out of the library. Amos Oz is pretty much about as lefty a peacenik as Israel's ever known. And this is one of the things he said in twenty fourteen. In my view, the ultimate evil in the world is aggression. And the only way to repel aggression is unfortunately by force. That is where the difference lies between a European pacifist and an Israeli peacenik like myself. And if I may add a little anecdote. A relative of mine who survived the Nazi Holocaust in Theresienstadt. Had always reminded her children and her grandchildren. That her life was saved in nineteen forty-five, not by peace demonstrators with placards and flowers. But by soldiers and submachine guns, many from the United States. I added many from the United States. That was the end of his quote. What happened on October seventh was carried out against Jews, but make no mistake. It was a crime against humanity. And what Hamas did, not civilians in Gaza, but Hamas. Did was a crime against all humanity. It was a crime against Jews. It was a crime against Muslims. It was a crime against Christians, Hindus, all of us. And just as our students are taught in their Holocaust and Amistad education in our district. When you call out a crime against humanity, it's something that should be done without reservation. Now, our council should have met with groups and spoken with their groups ahead of time. Instead of leaking language from the resolutions, which we're sure to cause animosities to flare. And I hope, even as people chant the ugliest of slurs outside our own building. That peace and unity does come to Teneck. Because when programming at our library is shut down because the passage of a peace and unity resolution is on the agenda. I'm not sure anyone can reasonably say that we have peace and unity in Teneck. It's the responsibility of council to safeguard each other as well as the town. Whoever shared the language ahead of that prior meeting should identify themselves and apologize to this township.
Thank you, Mr. Kaplan.
Cheryl Hall, please unmute, state your name for the record. Three minutes, whenever you are ready.
Okay, yeah, I think you can see me and hear me. Um, hi, Cheryl Hall, uh, Westerveld Place, lifelong resident of Teneck. And I want to call in to. Acknowledge and support this current resolution, and I hope it comes with unanimous support. I have been working for the past five years. Um, since nineteen, uh, since two thousand nineteen. To create integration, uh, through interfaith and to start the dialogue. Um, my hands are out. I told one resident tonight, I have your back. If someone comes for you, Cheryl Hall will be there for you. But I feel like it's useless because I am one candle in the wind and therefore it doesn't matter. Um, I think people are looking for leadership and direction. And I have to tell you, social media. Is a satanic thing right now. People get on there, they talk inappropriately, they may say something in response and hurt their neighbors. Everyone, I am pleading with you. Please stop the rhetoric on social media firing each other up. We are neighbors, we know each other, we raised our children together. Let Teneck be the model for the nation. On how we can go together. And this council is called for that leadership by example. The two young youths from Teneck High School, what a wonderful example. Where we can openly hear dialogue and listen to each other. Without trying to gaslight and fight each other. This is not the Teneck that I have grown up in for fifty years. And I want the Teneck that I know back. This terrorism leaks. Thousands and thousands of miles away, it impacts all of us. But our answer to terrorism is unity. That no, we will not divide. I do have your back. Please let me have your back. That's really what I'm feeling now. I wanna be there for my Jewish brothers and sisters. And my Muslim brothers and sisters, I know that you did not do this here in Teneck. We have to come together and you have to lead by that example. Tonight may be, uh, and you know, a first step. And Karen, thank you so much for lobbying for us to be able to speak before. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hall.
Hira Abasi. Please unmute, state your name for the record.
Hi, can you hear me?
Having a little, uh, trouble hearing you. Try speaking closer to your microphone.
Hello?
Yes, ma'am, we can hear you.
Okay, hi, I just wanted to say, my name is Hira. Um, I went to say I was on the Zoom call for the previous council meeting. I was also there for the board of education meeting. Um, and honestly, what I saw of Teneck those two days was not at all what I have been. Proud to have lived in for the last, you know, twenty something years of my life. Um, and I think the resolution that was passed originally, it was. Uh, it was indeed a disservice to a large population of Teneck. Um, and you know, this whole idea of like. This whole ideology of support, like, you know, somebody said in that meeting that support us now and we'll stand behind you later. And honestly, that. Hurt more than anything else because while we, I have always, like, I have Jewish neighbors and my siblings have played with their children. And it's horrifying to know that those people likely think the same thing, that we stand with them now, but we could, but we come after them. And to me, that does not promote the equality that I grew up within this town. And it was honestly like horrifying to see, and I hope that this resolution, the language is amended and, you know, the casualties are honored. And the people that are died, that have died are honored. Because it is, it's truly a shame to see a, a community that has always been diverse, that I've been proud to be a part of. Turn into this thing where there is a divide and there is a massive bridge that now every single resident feels. This is, you know, I'm not used to this and I, I hope that it can be safe. I don't know if it can, but that's all that I wanted to say because I'm, I'm truly like, it, it was a shame to be. A part of that and to see what kind of rhetoric was being spewed and what kind of language was being viewed. Um, and that is all.
Thank you, Ms. Abasi.
Lisa Schwartz, Lisa Schwartz, please unmute, state your name for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. It's actually Ron Schwartz. Lisa has the account.
Whenever you're ready, three minutes.
Yeah. This is Ron Schwartz, Larch Avenue in Teneck. Been a resident of Teneck for forty-three years. I want to commend the council on all the members of the council for working so hard. The last couple of weeks to get the language of this resolution that hopefully will be passed unanimously tonight, uh, together. I know how hard all of you have worked, uh, to agree, uh, on this, uh, language of this resolution. Also want to commend the two high school students, Leila and, uh, Rhoda, the Jewish student and the Muslim, uh, student who brought. Almost fifty students together at Ethical Culture last Wednesday night, just past Wednesday night, uh, to discuss this horrible issue. That has gone back for so many years to learn the history of it, to talk to each other, to understand each other. And to speak peacefully to each other and then try to understand each other. I commend those students and I know they will go forward and try to keep these dialogues going. I also want to thank the township manager. Uh, Dean Kozinski, who helped us with the, um, security at Ethical Culture that night. We had certain fears and Dean was wonderful and so was the police department and. Allaying those, those fears and providing us with the security, uh, to keep the kids safe that the kids needed. I know from talking to Dean that, um. We need to go forward, uh, after tonight, after this resolution. Uh, I know that he is trying to get clergy council to meet and to try to, uh, create some sort of dialogue between the various. Uh, religious groups in our town. I think that is essential, uh, going forward. I commend Dean, uh, for the effort that he is making and I hope that this council. Will support the township manager, uh, in those efforts. I'm old enough now and I've been here long enough to remember the Pennell shooting. And all the discord that, uh, occurred in this town after that shooting. And how the clergy council and the community relations board were instrumental in bringing people together. Uh, after, uh, the riot that ensued on the municipal green, uh, after the, uh, Pennell shooting. Uh, and I think, uh, we need to go forward and follow that example of all the dialogues that occurred. Uh, with the help of the clergy council and the community relations board back then. I think we need to do that again. I have seen, and it's very sad that people who have worked together in the groups that I've been active, uh, with. Uh, that, uh, of different religions, whose friendships that have been forged over the last couple of years with great effort. Have been torn apart, uh, over the recent events, uh, in, uh, Israel. And I hope that, uh, we can go forward and, uh, help bring this town together and help renew those, those friendships. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz.
Mohammed Bagatara, please unmute, state your name for the record. Please unmute, state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Mohammed, how are you?
Yes, hello, please unmute, state your name for the record.
Yeah, I'm on mute, can you guys hear me?
Having a hard time hearing you, sir. A lot of clutter back there. One more time, please state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Mohammed, can you guys hear me?
Yes, yes, sir, we can hear you.
Three minutes.
Excellent. Uh, I'm a Teneck resident for more than seventeen, eighteen years now. Uh, till October seventeen, I was much happier because we were in unity. Something happened on October seventh, we all condemn it. There's no question asked. What happened? What was not wrong? But right now, what's going on is also wrong. We should consider both sides, if you think about it. Also, right now, we should, we can see clearly, the innocent kids are dying. Innocent, like they have not seen anything. They don't have water, electricity, no communications. While we are sleeping on our bed and they are, don't have a place to sleep even. Please, please, please sign the peace treaty. Please do. Ceasefire, at least we cannot reach the federal government, but we can do locally. That we can show everyone that we are united against any kind of terrorism, any kind of bad stuff. If the same happens to anyone, we will stand with them. I'm as a Muslim telling you, is, if anything happened like this to any nation, any religion, any human being, we will stand with them. We don't care what, what religion, what color, what race you are. Wrong is wrong. At least say, so at least we have a peace in our heart. That we did the right thing. I want the council to do the right thing. And pass the treaty. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Alan Sohn, three minutes.
And you hear me?
Yes, sir, loud and clear.
Uh, again, uh, Alan Sohn, Teneck resident, I want to thank the entire council for passing the resolution on October seventeenth. Unconditionally and unanimously condemning the atrocities committed just ten days earlier by Hamas against innocent Israeli citizens. I was truly disturbed by what I saw taking place outside the council chambers that night. And I was genuinely frightened, having seen what went on outside the city council meeting held last week in Englewood. It is imperative that this resolution calling for peace and unity passes with that same seven zero unanimity. As the one that passed on the seventeenth. There's an old joke about how to carve a statue of an elephant from a piece of marble. Just chisel away all of the pieces that are not elephant. I thank the entire council for looking at the resolution proposed by councilwoman Belcher and deputy mayor G. Going through it line by line and focusing systematically on those elements that genuinely foster peace and unity here in Teneck. What was reached is a compromise that was concluded after hearing three hours of input at Gooden Wolfher on October seventeenth. It was reached following extensive discussion in public discussion groups. And dozens, if not hundreds of email and other messages sent to members of council. This resolution sends a critical message at this time. The message it sends is essential for every Teneck resident. Quote, that the township council of the township of Teneck has zero tolerance for terrorism, violence, hate crimes. And discrimination of any kind against any race, religion, nationality, ethnicity, gender or persons. And continues saying, quote, that the township council of the township of Teneck will work towards bringing the entire Teneck community together. To listen to and support each other regardless of religious affiliation or demographic background. In order to reach a, a place of peace, unity and healing. I hope that every single resident can support this. I encourage all of you to pass this resolution unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sohn.
Bringing in Judy Ramos, please state your name for the record, unmute.
Hi, good evening. My name is Judy Ramos, um, Alpine Drive, Teneck. I am a Teneck resident. I am Afro Caribbean by way of Jamaica, having lived in this town for over ten years. I am not. I am not Arab, Muslim, Israeli, Jewish, Palestinian, Israelite, Hebrew Israelite, or any demographic that would place me in this fight. I am simply a human being who cares deeply about people. And as a human being, I was stunned and horrified first by the brazen terrorist attack, October seventh, on Israel by Hamas and then by the Israeli retaliation on Gaza. Later, I was grieved when this township walked in two resolutions into this chamber to weigh in on a war between Israel and Hamas. And I was surprised when one passed and the other wasn't even heard despite pleas from the community at large. I am a student of history, an avid reader, dual major in college, taught it for a period of time and live life black in America. I fought for justice and human rights my whole life. I am for truth no matter who tells it. I am for justice no matter who is for or against. As Malcolm X said, "It is the hypocrisy for me." It is a fact that there was a governing body in the country of Israel that had gathered a group of people, forced them from their homes and land, relocated them to a small controlled area in which their movements, food, water, petrol, electricity and all elements of humanity is controlled by that ruling body. And whenever there is a challenge to this body's authority, the occupying forces exact collective punishment. The irony is breathtaking. With that said, I still believe in the power of the people and can openly condemn all men's inhumanity to man. As elected officials, you had one job to do, one for all the people of Teneq and you refused to pass both resolutions at the same time. Now it's just disingenuous. The truth is, you've already missed the opportunity to present a unifying image and a message that this, to this incredibly diverse town. But William Cullen Bryan said it best, "Truth crushed to the earth shall rise again. Rise from the four points of our globe, out from countrysides and small towns, out from our cities ghettos and even out from the blood-soaked rubble that is Gaza. Truth will always stand undefeated and this is why we say elections have consequences. Because all people can be trusted to keep their word and do their job on behalf of all people. So I guess we should thank you for acquiescing to public outrage and yielding to the will of people, even though you're a day late and a dollar short. Thank you for your time."
Thank you, Ms. Ramos.
Abby Berliner, Abby Berliner, please unmute, state your name for the record.
Avi Berliner, Teneq resident. Thank you so much. Um, and I would like to correct a number of the folks who have spoke where you say that Teneq has zero impact on what happens globally. That's incorrect and that has always been incorrect. Through the professional basketball teams that we've hosted, through the army bases that have been within the township borders, through the other companies that have lived within our township and have sent its goods far and wide. We have always had an impact. Um, our school system as well. But I would like to actually correct something that I said the last time we, uh, we met here. And that is as follows. I incorrectly pointed out that it was the people of Hamas that select, that was people of Palestine, of Gaza, that slept at Hamas as their leaders. That's actually incorrect. They were actually, uh, elected by all of the people from the West Bank and Gaza to represent them, to have Hamas as their leaders. And that's a problem. And that actually leads me to the one line that I find most questionable in the resolution that's up for passage. Whereas the actions of Hamas do not represent the views of all Palestinian people or the entire international Muslim community. That's incorrect. It's factually incorrect. And as council, we should be removing that from a resolution that we put up. I'd like to point out two other pieces and the issue that I have with Hamas being, being mentioned in there. Hamas continues to this day through their own laws to pay a pension to people who are terrorists, murderers, kidnappers, who are held in, who are held in prison in Israel for unlawfully causing terror throughout the world. It continues to be on their books. That's not me quoting Fox News. That's me quoting the actual laws of the P A that are quoted at beers, beersite.edu, a university from within that, from within that own country. It is a problem. Again, please remove the line that I quoted. Whereas the actions of Hamas do not represent the views of all Palestinian people or the entire international Muslim community. It is factually incorrect and unbecoming of Teneq to put that in our resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berliner.
Rachel Levatis, please unmute, state your name for the record.
Hi, um, my name is Rachel Levitas. I've been living in Teneq for three and a half years. Uh, we moved specifically to Teneq to engage in a vibrant Jewish community while also exposing our three children to the beauty of a larger, diverse community, whose members are different but extend respect, care and empathy for one another. First and foremost, I just want to thank, um, share that this has generally been my experience. My children have attended Teneq summer camps, art classes at the Rhoda Center and the Teneq Soccer League, playing and having fun alongside their Teneq neighbors while learning about other cultures and religions and coming to understand both the differences and the commonalities we share. These are important values to my family as I'm a first generation American, whose parents came to the U S as refugees of the Soviet Union, seeking a country with essential freedoms and better opportunities for their own children. I want to thank the council for the opportunity to speak here and for passing the resolution condemning the Hamas attack and supporting Israel's right to defend itself. This unequivocal support means everything at a time when the polarization in our country seems to be a foreboding of the repetition of history's darkest moments, moments that my great grandfathers and many other relatives did not survive. Your support means that I can have a shred of confidence that there are leaders in our community who will stand up for what is right and, and I can tell my six-year-old child not to worry when she jumps at the typical house creaks, the night noises that, that are made, uh, in, in, in our home and ask me if that could be someone breaking in and wanting to kidnap her. I hope that in the time between now and when she is ready to apply for college, the situation on college and university campuses will change drastically, but I am fearful that this will not be the case. And I wonder what my children's future in the U S really looks like if this continues. I am so thankful that you all have the courage to unanimously stand up for what is moral and ethical. There are no winners in war and the losses will be great on both sides, all sides. And I'm gut-wrenched every day when I read the news coming out of Israel and I know that the Palestinian people feel the same way. But there should be no question that Israel should have the right to defend itself and its citizens from the barbarism of Hamas, whose stated purpose is the genocide of Jews and whose call to death is echoed in the streets and campuses across my country. Israel does not want this war and Jews all over the world do not want this war. But when the choice is our own death or to go to war against terrorism, then that's not really a choice. So thank you so much for your unequivocal support.
Thank you, ma'am.
Sarah DeWood, please unmute, state your name for the record, address, please unmute, Sarah DeWood.
Hello, can you hear me?
Loud and clear. Name for the record, three minutes.
It's Sarah DeWood. I just wanted to make a statement. I wanted to say that the deplorable actions of October seventh doesn't justify the Israeli government to commit grave breaches of international humanitarian law, murder, murdering over eight thousand civilians. So I will be their voice tonight. I would like to thank Ms. Guy and Ms. Belcher for speaking up for the entire Teneq community. I would also like to thank them for being brave when it's intimidating to do so and they are being silenced. Tonight's unity and peace resolution, although late, is very much needed. The Muslim and Jewish communities are mourning and more divided than ever. The resolution that was passed had the power to unite the community if it recognized the mourning of all Teneq residents. I recognize that my Jewish neighbors are struggling, just as my Muslim neighbors are too. When you made the conscious decision to vote for a resolution that didn't focus on all who are struggling, your message became divisive. On HillaryGoldberg.com, it states that she will advocate for all Teneq residents. She is committed to unifying our community and bringing trust and transparency to our township council. This is false. On October eighteenth, a former council member attended the Board of Education meeting, wearing a kippah with the message, "Nothing says never again like an armed Jew. Jews can shoot." Unlike a lot of unverified information and propaganda, there is proof of this. Who is going to denounce this behavior tonight? This message was very frightening to see, especially at a school where young children were present. Being in a position of power comes with great responsibility. It is your duty to represent all constituents of Teneq. Our children are watching and they don't feel safe. This council needs to step up as better role models and do better. Please include the Palestinian lives lost and vote unanimously tonight on the u- unity and peace resolution. Lead the town in healing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wood.
Michael Klatsky, please unmute, state your name for the record.
Uh, Michael Klatsky, um, good evening, good evening, everyone, uh, members of the council, uh, everyone on Zoom. Tonight, I, I, I want to share a little, a little personal tidbit on what's happening here. Uh, after October, the heinous day on October seventh, everyone here has been having a, you know, we're having almost like this community-wide discussion. Now, after that happened, right, we, on October seventeenth, the council passed a very uh, strongly, a strong resolution denouncing what happened on October seventh. What I want to share with you is a little story that my grandmother told me. She called me up on the phone. She's about ninety years old. Right? So my grandfather was born nineteen thirty-three. My grandmother was born in nineteen thirty-four. And the one thing that they told me that was very revealing about how we're all acting to each other is that they were watching videos on social media, on TV, reading things. And my grandmother called me and she cried and said that she has never reseen the horrors and brutality of humanity toward each other from their childhood till now. The way we're talking to each other, the way we're rampaging on college campuses and universities, the way we're, you know, we're bogging down council meetings to basically tell each other that we're, we're trash. This all happened before and a hundred million, we, we killed a hundred million people in the name of that. And she called me and they live overseas and she cried and said that, you know, when they were kids, World War Two was happening. They were seven, eight years old. It wasn't until they were teenagers till all these war crimes came about, came to light and people understood what had happened. They had witnessed all these things as children, right? They were watching people dehumanizing each other and talking about each other in horrible ways. But they, as when they grew up in their most formative years, they understood what the result was and the resulting era of peace that came after that. And this has been, you know, and this was the worst that she had ever seen, she told me. And she said that I must do everything in my power to stop people from acting this way to each other. And that's what I ask all of you tonight is just do better, Teneq. We can do it. Thanks. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Klatsky.
Greg Berman, please unmute, state your name for the record, address.
Hello, good evening. My name is Greg Berman. I'm a Teneq resident who live on Northumberland Road here in Teneq. Um, I want to thank, uh, Councilwoman G and Councilwoman Belcher for presenting this resolution, especially presenting it, um, before previous meeting. And though I think the council ultimately did the right thing and passed the right, that resolution last time, I do appreciate the sentiment. And I do appreciate the fact that, uh, the, uh, peace and unity is something we should all strive for. However, I do want to point out some difficulties I have with this resolution. Which I do think ultimately in a changed format should be, uh, should be passed. Uh, first of all, what I didn't want to do, but I perhaps should do is to address the number count um, on that's been impressed by some people. Just want to point out that the only reason why the toll on the Israeli side, on the Jews, Arabs, Thai workers and others who were brutally slaughtered to the extent that I think really hurts to even repeat. The only reason why that number wasn't double, triple, quadruple what, um, actually occurred is because the Israeli army stepped in and stopped the slaughter. The only reason why the death toll in Gaza, in the, in the population centers where rockets are being fired from among the innocent civilians, by all accounts. But the only reason why that death toll is not triple or quadruple is because the Israeli army tries to do whatever extent is possible to limit those civil casualties. Uh, the, we can start counting numbers on the one side and on the other side and I think it does uh, hide from, from the reality that there is a real individuals, humans who are being killed. I, there's another thing that we, we should not hide. And I do, as a previous, another previous speaker, uh, said, have a real difficulty with the line that said that the action of Hamas did not represent the views of all Palestinian people or the entire international Muslim community. We don't know that. None of the council women here speaks for the Muslim community. And for tonight was perhaps the first time that I've heard anyone who said anybody to even condemn the actions of a community. By various reports, there's a really broad support for Hamas in the, in Gaza. And if there's no support for Hamas, there's this even more support for what Hamas have done, extremely popular. And I really believe that it is inappropriate and almost insulting to put the words in their mouth in the Muslim community. Should wait to make that statement until Muslim community can speak for themselves and say that they, Hamas did not represent that.
Thank you, sir.
David Jagowitz, please state name, record, uh, state your name and address for the record, please. Three minutes.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Loud and clear.
David Jacobowitz, I live in Teneq. I've lived here since nineteen seventy. We brought up our children here and we've loved every day in this township. I'm proud of this town and its atmosphere of tolerance and respect for different faiths, races and nationalities. The resolution that was passed was an excellent demonstration of the moral values shared by all decent people in the face of the cold-blooded murder of innocent Israeli people by anti-Jewish racist terrorists. As a child of Holocaust survivors born in the D P camp, I never thought I would see a repetition of the Nazis' behavior anywhere in the world, let alone against the Jewish people. So I'm proud of the Teneq council for standing up to evil and calling it out for what it is. I do believe that the unity resolution deserves to be passed once it's reviewed and approved. One last point, please don't be swayed by the irrational and hateful and intemperate words of outside agitators who have no business meddling in Teneq's affairs. I hope that as we here in Teneq move forward, we can all come together, Jews, Muslims, Christians, all people of goodwill to uphold our moral, moral values and to achieve a brighter future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Steve Canaric, please unmute, state your name for the record, address.
Steven Canaric, can everyone hear me?
Loud and clear.
Yes, sir.
Am I in video?
No, sir. We can only see your name, but you have three minutes, sir.
Steven Canaric. Steven, Ron, just start that clock over real quick, please. You're free to unmute. Your video is not on unless you want it to be. Wow, Steven figures that out. We are bringing Morty Rothberg. Hope I see you now, Steve. Steve, can we hear you?
Yes, okay, thank you.
All right, there you go, Morty. Please sit tight. Steve, name and address for the record, please.
Wait, cause in, in the bottom. My name is Steve Canaric and I've been a Teneq resident for more than the past twenty years. That's long enough to remember a time when signs went up throughout our neighborhood that said, "Hate has no home here." I hope a lot of us remember those signs. They were printed in six languages, English, Hebrew, Arabic, Spanish, Korean and Urdu. I only wish that this sentiment can hold strong throughout our town and in fact, throughout the world today. The terrorist acts on October seventh and indeed the continuing constant barrage of missiles that Hamas continues to rain down on random citizens in Israel, including and up till today, whether they be men, women and children, are acts of hate and terror. Condemning acts of terror are not divisive. I was there on October seventh when rockets were falling on Jerusalem and they were aimed at myself, my wife and my children. It is the moral duty of any country to protect its citizens. Therefore, I thank the council for clearly condemning terror, in particular- in particular the terror committed by Hamas on October 7th and continuing the sentiment hate has no home here. I would also like to thank the Teaneck police officers who after the last town council meeting offered to walk us safely back to our cars. But I ask, why would I need a police escort to get to my own parked car in my own neighborhood? I look forward to a future where indeed hate has no home here is a reality in Teaneck and throughout the world. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Steve. Morty, you are free to unmute. Thank you for your patience. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Morty Rothberg from Teaneck. I've been a resident here for over 20 years. Raised children here, actually have some grandchildren here. I love Teaneck. I want to thank the town council for your service. Thank the Teaneck Police Department as well as Dean Kunsinski, who by the way, it's nice to see his actually face this evening. I love getting his voicemails as well. Just want to let Cheryl Hall know that I have her back as well. I just first want to thank the council for passing the resolution last week to condemn Hamas. Unfortunately, at the time I was in Israel visiting my son who's his gap year and consoling him dealing with, you know, the issues that they're facing. I'm a Jew that lives in Teaneck and deeply afraid by the rising tide of antisemitism. It's scary that I live in a time when I go to synagogue on Saturday and we have to have armed guards guarding us. And I just want to say that I pray for peace and unity. And I really want to thank you all for your service and all that you do. Have a good evening.
Thank you, sir.
Golyn E. Golyn E, please unmute. State your name and address for the record. Golyn E.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, I'd like to claim a name and address for the record.
My name is Golon Elias and for the safety of my family, I'm not going to mention my address, but a number of council members could vouch for the fact that I live in Teaneck. Firstly, I'm very thankful for our town's leadership, starting with our amazing Teaneck manager, Dean Kunsinski, who's always supporting everyone in this community 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. To Councilwoman Goldberg for writing a resolution that was very clearly denouncing terrorism and showed support for the United States Democratic allies. You did nothing but that and you received a lot of inappropriate backlash and comments. To Karen Organ, thank you for always keeping the process of the council transparent and with appropriate governance while others attempt to circumvent process and procedures. And to the remaining members of the town council, thank you for voting for the resolution last week unanimously. I want to just clarify a few points regarding the resolution that was passed last week. This resolution had nothing to do with the Muslim community. It had nothing to do with the Palestinian community. And it definitely has nothing to do with any other group or community within Teaneck. In this resolution, the town council stood on a moral ground. They showed us that as an example for our community and children, they will always condemn terrorism and always support residents directly impacted by that terrorism and hate. There's always a time to support subgroups of the community as we've seen in the very recent past in this town. For those of you who forget, while also balancing the needs of the community as a whole, it is meaningful to so many of us to say the least. In relation to tonight's resolution, I provided my comments to the council via email. And I know nothing's going to change at this point, but I would appreciate a response from those who authored it. The town has been fractured for 10 months, if not longer, and a peace and unity resolution or push should have been brought to the table months ago. I suggest you as council keep working actively to support the town in its pursuit for peace. Because clearly from other comments this evening and the events and words shared in the town over the last few weeks, the resolution alone is not sufficient. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Jeffrey. Please unmute. State your name and address for the record.
Hi, good evening. Jeff Assis, I live in Teaneck about 10 years. I'm not going to speak on either resolution. What I'm going to speak on is the concept of resolutions. The town is constantly passing resolutions that seem to cause more harm than, than, than goodwill. Also, for every resolution, there's 10 other resolutions that you could pass. Why are we not mourning the 350,000 civilians killed in, in Syria over the last 12 years? Why are we not talking about the half a million people that have died in Ukraine over the last year and a half? There's a resolution for everything and the town has decided that and, and every time you pass a resolution, it makes things worse in this town, not better. There's more fighting, there's more disagreements. Your job as the town council is to take care of the town. That means get my gar, pick up our garbage, the police, the fire department, make sure the parks are running, pick up the leaves properly, run the town so that we, the residents, can live here. Don't be, don't play in international politics. Don't play in politics at all. That's why you are not a party. You're not a Republican, you're not a Democrat, you're not independent. You just represent the town. These resolutions have only caused harm and disharmony in this town. And I would, I would ask that the town, and yes, this is ironic, pass a resolution not to pass any more of these resolutions. I, I am a Jew. I am very upset about what happened on October 7th. Very upset about the 1,400 people that were slaughtered in a barbaric manner. But I'm not looking for this town of Teaneck to, to comment on it. I don't think your comments are going to change anything that happens in Israel. I don't think they're going to change anything that's going to happen in our federal government. I think that it doesn't, and it did not help this town. And tonight's resolution is very nice. But based on the words of many people who've spoken before me, I don't feel that it's going to bring unity to this town. And like most resolutions on topics that have nothing to do with this town, you're, you're just causing disharmony and disunity. So I would encourage the town council moving forward to, to step away from these types of resolutions and to focus on more of what we need as residents. Thank you and have a great night.
Thank you, sir.
Sheri Ann, please unmute. State your full name and address for the record.
My name is Sheri Hanid. Excuse me. I'm a lifelong Teaneck resident. I do not want to share my address for my safety. I would like to, first of all, thank the council for the peace and unity resolution. Thank you for recognizing that we need that. I would also like to just ask my fellow neighbors to please stop explaining my pain to me. I understand your pain. I hear you when you say you want me to denounce Hamas and I have. I'm disgusted by what they did on October 7th. I wish it never happened. I cry almost every night thinking about those children. I cry sending my children to the mosque for weekend school. I'm scared for their safety at school every day and you can hear my voice shake. I am offended by my neighbors who think that, who have a doubt that my allegiance is not supporting them, that my allegiance is somehow with Hamas. I, I, I'm saddened and you can hear it in my voice. I'm not going to be as eloquent as I ever have been in my life because of how disenfranchised I feel. Because of how sad I am that maybe my neighbors think that I wish ill upon them and I don't. I never want to see anyone hurt. Hate doesn't have a home here. We remember those signs. We see those signs. I appreciate them. And I would hope that my fellow neighbors don't think that I or conflate me and who my family is with vicious people who've killed innocents. But I want my neighbors, just as I've heard them and have cried for their pain, to see my pain for the 8,000 people, mainly children who have died, who didn't, who couldn't vote for a governing body, who don't know what Hamas is, who haven't even opened their eyes. Some who haven't even gotten their birth certificates yet have their death certificates now. So please stop explaining my pain to me. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Shewab Ahmed, please unmute. State your name for the record.
Hi, this is Shewab Ahmed, Harding Avenue, Teaneck. First of all, I just wanted to give you a round of applause to the gentleman before who basically, you know, mentioned that there's no room to talk about these things, you know, global politics, when we should be focusing on matters that's on hand, right? Now, there were a few more gentlemen that talked about, oh, they were there in Israel when this happened. You know, I'm really happy that you guys are home back, you know, safe, secure, all good. I have a friend, a good friend of mine who is in Gaza right now, right? Every day I wake up to see if I'm actually going to get a text message from him, whether he's going to be alive or not. I actually sent him some money, you know, because his house was blown up. And this is the person I went to with grad school. I went to grad school with him in Connecticut, right? A few states from here. I wake up to find out what's going on. You know, he sends you a message. I'm all happy. Now, my question is, there, there are quite a few people that talk about, you know, I mean, obviously, what's happened when, when civilians are murdered anywhere, it's wrong. I condemn what's happened, what's done by Hamas. At the same time, I condemn what's been done by the IDF, by the occupation forces that's killing people mercilessly. I condemn US, the US government for supporting it. I condemn the Saudis and, you know, the Arabs that are there, that's not helping out in any manner. I condemn Egypt for not opening the border. So the list of condemnation goes, you know, it just goes up and up. So my question is, Hamas does not exist? Or yeah, there are certain elements of Hamas that exist within West Bank. But if you are keeping track of all this viciousness that's happening in the region, there was an olive farmer that was killed by a settler two, two days ago. Today, just a few hours ago, there was a village that was, that was, you know, set alight. What, what was the reason for this, right? You, you questioned like the olive farmer, was he attacking Israelis or Jewish people with olives? He was killed, you know, while he was picking olives by a settler. So when you think about these things that have been happening for 75 years, what would be the response, right? I'm not justifying that the response is, is needed. But you can imagine when you're in that situation, what would you do? In the end, I, you know, again, I'm not going to shy away from saying this, it, it is an apartheid state. And we are in that situation right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Simon, please unmute. State your name for the record. Say your name, address, Simon.
Simon Crisher, proud member, proud resident of Teaneck for over 30 years. And first of all, I want to thank the council for the resolution on the 17th and also hopefully the resolution of tonight. I've been, I've raised three lovely children over here. And I've coached Teaneck junior soccer for many years, mixing all races, creeds, colors. Everyone had a grand old time. Just a few months ago, I was at the Teaneck Swim Club having fun with my Islamic cousins and my black brethren. Oh, by the way, I'm Jewish, if you didn't get it. And I just have one question for the council. Why is it that we're allowing busloads of people from other towns to be bused into the council meetings so that Teaneck residents can't get in? Why is it that we allow rallies outside there? Where, I mean, I saw some parts of the rally, I saw the Jewish rallyists holding up signs saying, free the hostages. And I saw on the other side, signs that say, kill the Jews. This doesn't seem like equality to me. This does not feel safe to me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
RB, please unmute and state your name, address for the record. RB.
Hi, this is Ramallah Bilu. I live in Teaneck. I will not say my address because of safety reasons.
Say your name one more time, my friend, please.
Hi, my name is Ramallah Bilu. I will not just, I live in Teaneck for about 16 years, 17 years now. I would like to thank G and Belcher for passing, coming up with this resolution. However, I'm, I'm happy that the amount of the casualties that have occurred in Palestine is not mentioned. And again, I'm saying Palestinians. I did not mention Muslim because it's Palestinians. It's Muslims and Christians that have been killed and are continuing to still being killed and their number has not been counted for. Number two, the Islamophobia that's been spreading and I personally have felt it. I do not feel safe in Teaneck. I do not let my daughter walk on her own because we were, a Jewish person passed by us said some very bad slurs against us while we're walking on Teaneck going to the library. That it feels so unsafe now as a Muslim reminds me of my time back when 9/11 occurred. This is not justifiable. And on third occasion, when my children were at the board of ed meeting, one of the council, previous council member wore a kippah that said, Jews can shoot. As a Muslim, I under, Judaism is also an Abrahamic religion. For a person to wear a religious gear which teaches to shoot and hate, that is totally not acceptable. He should be held responsible for that. We, after bringing all these resolutions that have come about from, especially from last week, October 17th, where Muslims' voices were not heard and only one side was spoken for. There's so much divide and disunity among this community that it's shameful. We can't even take care of our garbage pickup issues. Yet we have, we have gone into international politics and only siding with one side and not listening and hearing the hurt from the others. The people have mentioned that, you know, Jewish women who wear skirts and boys who wear kippah are being picked on. So are Muslims. We are so much alike and we are different. We both are facing a lot of hate towards us. Yet we have this, you know, back and forth that please condemn this, please condemn that. We condemn everyone. Anyone that has killed innocent civilians should be condemnable. Like someone said, we condemn Saudis, we condemn every single Muslim country that has done harm. Yet no one condemns Israel and its actions. No one condemns that children are killed without any reprehension or any, any accountability. This is not fair. If you're going to condemn, condemn everyone for killing civilians, killing innocent. And please respect each other. I should not fear for my children, my daughters, who are young and older.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am.
Sahar, please unmute. State your name, address for the record whenever you are ready. Sahar, please unmute. State your name for the record.
Yeah, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, three minutes. Please state your full name, address for the record.
Sahar Salem, I'd rather not state my address for safety reasons. I had a whole speech ready after hearing and listening to everything that was said. My heart was shattered. Last time we had a council meeting, I want to thank all the council members. But I'm sorry that you guys couldn't understand the Muslim and Christian community that were suffering and that came forward on the last meeting. I didn't feel like the Palestinian community was heard at all. We are deeply saddened for everyone, for the Jewish people that are hurting, for the Muslim people that are hurting and for the Christian people that are hurting. It's important to note that we all live together in this country and we need to respect one another. And it's, it's important to also know that history did not begin on October 7th. This doesn't in any way justify what happened on that date. If our intentions are to move forward as a community, we need to be able to understand the experiences of the Palestinian people. For the last 75 to 80 years, and this is simply historical fact, there has been mass killings of tens of thousands of Palestinian children, women, men. And the killing began way back since 1947 and 1948. And it hasn't stopped and it won't stop. People have been expelled from their land and they have been occupied. And they have been occupied. Gaza is an occupied area. The West Bank is an occupied area. The occupiers, being Israel, are responsible for those people. Cutting off water, electricity, food, medical supplies. All against the, the United Nations laws in every way. They're never gonna be held accountable. Palestinians in America today are hurting. Israelis are hurting, Jewish people are hurting, we're all hurting. We're not here to hurt each other, but we need to understand the history before we point fingers at each other. People are mentioning the Holocaust, but they're not mentioning the genocide that's happening today in Gaza. People are mentioning the number of prisoner, of hostages in Israel, two hundred, over two hundred. But no one's mentioning the thousands and hundreds of children and women and men that are held hostage.
Thank you, ma'am.
Muna, please state your full name, address for the record, unmute.
Um, hi, my name's Aisha Saratul. I will not reveal my address for personal reasons. Um, but I want to say that, um, I don't really not, I don't really know much about politics. And I am just a twelve-year-old girl. I, I, I think, I don't think this is right, and this isn't okay to happen. Um, I find it really upsetting that, um, people fight. And I don't fi- I don't want this, and I don't think anyone wants this. Um, but I know this is a lovely place and a lovely world. But we shouldn't fight, and we should work as a team and not think about our differences, but our similarities. Um, um, it's really upsetting that the, like, if we're, wo- world wars are going to cause divisions among us. Um, it's going to be really upsetting, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Muna. Tanya, please unmute, state your full name for the record and address.
I think I unmuted. Did I unmute?
Did, yes, we hear you loud and clear.
Thank you so much. I can't see myself, but I'm just gonna go ahead and talk. Um, my name is Dr. Tanya Baran-Ragio-Ashley. Um, I am a, well, my family has been in TNEC since nineteen sixty-eight. And I'm also a pediatrician, and I would just like to focus on the children. Um, I thank the council members for all their hard work. Um, but I, and I hope that all of you will pass the unity and peace resolution that was prepared by our council members, G and Belcher. Because it says that all of the people, especially the people of our neighborhood, are important, counted and are valued, regardless of their race, ethnicity, and religion. I was concerned, like everybody else, when on ten seventeen, one resolution was passed, there was no question about that resolution, I was fine with that. But when this resolution came up, it was the way in which it was attacked. First, that, you know, the fact it just so happened that it's two African-American women that presented the, the resolution. And suddenly, their resolution has to be marked up, it has to be reviewed. I found that very disrespectful. And nothing works in isolation. And what may not have been apparent is that the following evening, it had an impact on a board of education meeting held at TNEC High School. I watched the most unbelievable, ugly manner in which young Muslim women who were, who were adolescents, high school students, being spoken to by adults in a way that they should never have been spoken, none of our children should be spoken to like that. And I hope the council members will look at the videos from, from, from that evening. And, um, hopefully, that will never, never happen again. We have to respect all of our children. Um, we need to demonstrate that by what we say and what we do. And as was said earlier, so many people have died. Over eight thousand people have died. We don't know how many people have been injured and how many children. We believe it's about forty percent, but who knows? So in closing, I hope you will stand by your word, pass this resolution. And also, just in the future, be careful what you say, cuz it impacts everybody.
Thank you. Thank you.
RK, please state your full name, address for the record. RK, please unmute, name for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. This is Reshma Khan, a longtime TNEC resident. Um, also, Mr. Clerk, I must point out that I don't see a clock when I'm speaking, so I actually don't know. Uh, the clock is missing. Uh, so I just thought I'd point it out to you. Thank you.
And you, did you just see that invite I sent you? Need to be a panelist.
Fantastic. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. TNEC Council, first I must say that my heart goes out tonight to the innocent people being killed in the airstrikes, the land incursion that is happening in Palestine right now, including those hostages who have been separated from their families, living in fear. No mu- no one must have to live in fear. My heart also goes out to my Jewish friends right here in this community, who are facing antisemitism, and to my Muslim friends who are facing Islamophobia in their circles. The world is in grief and turmoil today. All turn, all TNEC residents are in grief and turmoil, hurting since October seventh. You, as our elected officials, had an option. You had an option to listen to the public on the night of October seventeenth, which you did, we had a very long good and welfare session, and pass a resolution condemning loss of innocent lives lost on both sides. You failed. You unanimously passed a resolution condemning Hamas and supporting the state of Israel. This you moved to do swi- swiftly, but you did not even entertain a peace and unity resolution for discussion. Then you let TNEC residents wait in dismay for a peace resolution for ten long days, completely heedless to the humanitarian catastrophe that's exploding in Gaza. Ten long days have passed, and here comes your peace resolution today, a diluted version of the previous dra- draft, which does not even acknowledge the lives lost in Palestine, half of those being children. Do those children feel any less pain than our own children? Do Palestinian parents love their children any less? So therefore, you failed us again tonight when you had an opportunity to stand on the right side of history. You worry about optics, right? You worry about listening to resident input. Today, your second chance that you threw away, selfishly projecting your personal agendas, we will remember these optics. Now, should we be asking you, do you condemn the more than eight thousand lives, innocent lives lost in Palestine? Do you condemn the killing of more than three thousand children there? So what are the optics of this situation? Council members Goldberg, Schwartz, Katz, Organ, and Mayor Pagan. There is no word, not a word, not a mention about calling for ceasefire in your peace resolution. How can you have peace when you have a genocide happening in Palestine? Your actions, council, speak louder than your words. Words matter, but right now, we are watching your actions. Please don't bring your empty promises of, and fear of optics tonight. You have failed us more than once when you could have stood for ju- justice. And therefore, we are watching you. And to all my Jewish neighbors who came out in favor of not having a resolution on world topics, I'm with you. Why bring a world topic here to TNEC and divide our community, which is the disservice you did to us, council, on October seventeenth? To my other Jewish neighbors who are speaking about Hamas, sorry, we here in TNEC do not represent Hamas, and we do not celebrate them. I take serious offense. Thank you.
Shinaz, please unmute, state your name for the record.
Hi, this is Shinaz. I've been in TNEC for fifty years, as you know. I feel blessed to grow up in a TNEC and more closely connect with the Jewish community. I have very close Jewish childhood friends and Jewish roommates. I have reached out to many of my Jewish friends after the October seventh attacks, including rabbis, and asked if I could join them at synagogues at their vigils. I understand that the Jewish community is hurting. The resolution passed on October seventeenth is a reflection of a pain a community is feeling, and includes, it includes data from Holocaust in Germany. And the resolution was not just limited to Israel data. It humanizes their pain and its magnitude. Everyone condemns Hamas. We all have witnessed with horror when a funeral of a journalist, Shereen, was attacked on the way to the church. Yet no one condemned this act. We witnessed the terror of worshippers in Ramadan face being beaten and attacked in Al-Aqsa Mosque, and no one condemned that. We saw a rise in anti-Muslim, and no one addressed it. TNEC is a diverse community, and the pain is not limited to any one community. The Palestinian, Arab, Muslim, and Christian communities are also hurting. The magnitude of their pain and the history of their pain is not being communicated in the similar way. Palestinian pain also has deep history and fears justified based on journalistic failure to verify. And Islamophobia that is very real, considering the brutal and fatal attack of a six-year-old child, Wade Al-Payoum. Their hurt and legitimate concerns are not reflected in the resolution, which further deepens the pains of Palestinians who are equally traumatized. It's the way people are dehumanized. Dehumanization is a process of making an individual or group of people as less than oneself or other people. Here's how people were dehumanized right here in TNEC, not acknowledging their pain, postponing a resolution that impacts others, saying that this is not your day, removing the name of a child stabbed to death in Illinois, communication biases, removing data of over eight thousand Palestinian kills. This is how we dehumanize, and you have shown how to do that. I urge the council members to know that they have the responsibility for all of TNEC. I am glad the resolution passed on October seventeenth, because it comforts some of the Jewish community. But how will we treat the other sixty percent of TNEC with equity? This is your challenge. Denise and Daniel are setting, settling for this resolution, because some of the council members do not wanna recognize or humanize Palestinian lives lost by questioning data. You will pass this resolution, but your actions do not reflect equity, peace, unity, or effort to heal TNEC. You have elevated the fears of many people in TNEC, including the Jewish community, despite passing the resolution.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am.
Alicia Ross, please unmute, state your name for the record.
Hi, good evening, Alicia Ross. I am a fifty-four-year resident of TNEC. Born, raised, and very proud of living here. Um, I wanna thank the council for having this special meeting tonight. Uh, clearly, um, the community needs this forum to vent. I wanna respectfully disagree about the import, with, with my, uh, other citizen of TNEC about the importance of resolutions. I do think they have a place. Town, the town leader's job is to make their residents feel safe and feel, um, a resolution can be an effective way of doing that if it's done respectfully and doesn't de- divide the citizens further. Um, unfortunately, the October seventeenth uh, resolution that was passed ignored a significant portion of TNEC citizens. On October seventeenth, one resol- resolution should have been proposed, not a reactionary, single resolution that was one-sided. A single resolution would have shown the residents of TNEC that you have their back. This one resolution was passed, and the other was not even put on the agenda, which amounted to a slap in the face of a good portion of the citizens of TNEC. I pray tonight that you all are listening, and you pass the peace and unity resolution, resolution unanimously. And work hard to get to work creating opportunities for dialogue to heal the wounds that were created on October seventeenth. Please, I implore you to reach out to the established groups in this town, such as Cheryl Hall's interreligious faith community and TNEC Women Together, and reach out to them and speak about how to get these dialogues started so that we can start the healing process. I am not going into all the horrors that are going on affecting Jews and Muslims in the Middle East, because those are global things that we do not have control of. They're horrific, and everyone in TNEC is scared and frightened. And that's why this resolution, a single resolution, would have been so important to show the town that we're creating a safe environment for them. Please, I also implore everyone who cares, and you must care if you're on this call, to reach out to your neighbors and start a dialogue. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you, Ms. Ross.
It is Shiva Klatsky, please unmute, state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Alicia Vaklatsky, and I've been a TNEC resident for twelve years. Uh, my husband spoke previously, and he's known by a lot of people, so if you'd like to know where we live, I'm sure it's easy to find out. Um, first, I'd like to take the time to thank the council for passing the resolution that they did on October seventeenth. Um, a lot of people have been coming, um, to speak and saying, you didn't listen to the voices of the TNEC community, and you don't understand the pain of the Palestinian community. I don't think that's true, because we're all in pain. I don't think passing a resolution, denouncing a terrorist organization and an attack, and giving the victims of that attack the right to defend themselves, negates other people's pain. And the fact that that is being called divisive is what I believe is creating the disturbance in our community unity. In the resolution that's up for, um, vote tonight, it says that the actions of Hamas do not represent the Palestinian people or the entire international Muslim community. The part where it says they don't represent the Palestinian people, in large part, yes, but it's important to remember that in two thousand and six, it was a recognized free and fair election that Hamas was elected into office. And if you look at the rise in antisemitic attacks going on globally, not just in America on college campuses, not just in Australia where they're yelling, gas the Jews, not just in Russia where mobs are going after planes, they're not saying, we stand with Hamas. For the most part, we're hearing, free Palestine. And that is what is making us feel unsafe in our home, at least for me and for my family. I don't think anybody in TNEC supports Hamas. But nobody is condemning the people yelling, free Palestine, and perpetuating violence. No one is condemning the people being bused in from outside communities, and then having TNEC residents being forced to walk to their cars at a threat that they're gonna get attacked. And also in the resolution, it says that we need compassion and understanding. I think the first step to compassion and understanding, and first step to unity, is understanding what is making us upset, and what is making us feel hurt, and what is making us afraid. And those are different things. And we have to recognize our differences and be able to support each other in those in order to come together as a community, not to say that everybody's equal, and what everybody's feeling is equal, and everybody's going through the same thing. Because that's where I think the divide comes from, because we're not going through the same things. And until we can see that, I think there's gonna be, I think our community is gonna remain fractured. And I truly hope that this sheds some light on what some of our Jewish community is feeling, and we can move forward, and how, and we can move forward in understanding each other's differences, and how we can support each other in these hard times. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Klatsky.
Mr. Merrick, um, can I maybe make a recommendation? We stopped in welfare at ten o'clock. We've heard, we've heard a few more residents, we've heard some great opinions, very balanced opinions, and I think, uh, the council has spent weeks debating this, and I think we're ready to vote.
Everyone okay with that? About eight? How about we keep going to the two-hour mark? How about we keep going to the two-hour mark at ten nineteen and then revisit?
Sharon Greenbaum, please unmute, state your name, address for the record.
Hi, can you hear me?
Loud and clear, three minutes.
Hi, I'm a Teneck resident for sixty-two years. I've lived on the same street in Teneck for the past sixty-two years. And I was raised by parents who were very involved in founding an established synagogue in this town. My parents, my father fought in World War Two and was in the Air Force. One of his missions was the bombing of Berlin. Unfortunately, I've learned from my father's experience and from life experience that in order to root out evil as Israel is trying to do against Hamas, there are casualties. But and I've heard everybody speaking tonight about, you know, being concerned for the Palestinian victims. But it is important to know the Palestinian victims that are going to be injured or killed in Israel defending itself. It is all due to Hamas terror attack. And they are Hamas is responsible for all the deaths. And I I'm very disappointed that in the last town council meeting, I didn't hear people, I didn't hear people supporting Palestinians speaking up against Hamas. And I didn't hear anybody tonight either speaking about the two hundred and thirty-nine hostages that are still being held by Hamas and that should be released per mandate. It's a a war crime to take babies and to take children and hold them hostage. And if they were to be released, I think that there that would be a big step towards the lives of the Palestinians in Gaza having to be put in harm's way by Hamas. I really, I grew up in this town sixty-two years. I had friends from all different walks of life. And it would be nice for everyone to be unified. But from hearing everybody speaking at the last town council meeting and this town council meeting, it seems like a hope that will not be fulfilled, unfortunately, because people are just not willing to see, to see each other as humans. And I I grew up. My father had a company, an ice cream company, and he supported the Palestinian families that were trying to put themselves through school. The names were the Katabs. Samuel Katab, Jonathan Katab, Daoud Katab, and Lydia Katab worked for his company and were.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mindy Stein, USA, please unmute.
Yes.
State your name for the record. Thank you, three minutes.
Mindy Stein, I also don't want to say my address, and I am a resident of Teneck for forty-three years. I want to thank Hillary Goldberg for her courage for introducing the resolution that was unanimously passed at the last council meeting. It has given great support and comfort to the Jewish community during a very traumatic time. I was just listening to comments that Israel is not providing humanitarian aid. First of all, any discussion about humanitarian aid must focus on the more than two hundred hostages, including babies, teenagers, children, women, and grandparents who must be released. Israel built ten electricity lines and three water lines for the Gazan population. However, when Hamas entered, infiltrated Israel, they destroyed nine out of the ten power lines to Gaza. Furthermore, one of the water lines was knocked out of operation by Hamas. But now Israel has opened the other two water lines in southern Gaza. There is enough water for the Gazans. Arab and Western officials have told the New York Times over the weekend that Hamas is stockpiling food and fuel in the Gaza Strip and keeping it from Gazan residents who desperately need it. Israel is not required to give its own resources to Gazans, especially when there have been hundreds of thousands of Israelis displaced from their own homes and Hamas has committed crimes against humanity. But yet Israel is supplying humanitarian aid, even though it has been proven that Hamas is taking and diverting this aid for military use, its own and its own purposes. Whereas Israel tries to save Palestinian lives, wanting them to go to the south and asking Egypt to let them cross over the border to safety, Hamas uses the Gazan civilians as human shields and diverts the needed humanitarian aid for their own purposes. Hamas is the cause of your suffering. As for the people calling for a ceasefire, as Prime Minister Netanyahu said, there was no ceasefire after Pearl Harbor or nine eleven. This is not about a conflict between Palestinians and Israel, but about a conflict between radical Islamists and Israelis and Jews. None of us want any Palestinians to die. But this Hamas threat cannot remain on Israel's borders after October seventh and their crimes against humanity. Please pressure Egypt to open their borders. Finally, all around the world, Jews see signs and hear chants at Palestinian rallies saying, "Death to the Jews, gas the Jews, and from the river to the sea, Palestine will be free," which means destruction to Israel. There are no similar signs at pro-Israeli rallies calling for death of Palestinians or any violence used against any Palestinians. This will frighten Jews around the world, and this needs to be addressed. I would also like to thank the other council meetings and Mayor Pagan and Town Manager Kaczynski. Thank you. But the Palestinian people that are living here, I have no fight with you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Bringing in Shamil Fatima. Please state your name for the record, address, unmute. Please unmute.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, hi, we can hear you, three minutes.
Hello, my name is Siaat Fatima, and I've been a Teneck resident for seventeen years, which is almost my whole entire life. I want to start by saying that I really hope my fellow Teneck residents do some research and reading before they start speaking in a public forum. One thing that has me, one thing that really struck me throughout this whole meeting is people claiming that all Palestinians are Hamas and one even saying that the whole community of Muslims is Hamas. There's literally people that are Muslims living with you. So are you calling us all terrorists? I literally cannot believe that you're going on a public forum and calling off residents of Teneck terrorists too. This is Islamophobia happening right in front of our eyes. And we condemn antisemitism, we should also condemn Islamophobia too. And I just want to say, do you guys know that the terrorist group of Hamas, which it is, because what they do does not represent anything that we stand by as Muslims, is actually was actually funded by Israel at one point? I want you guys to look at your own government and see what they're doing before you start talking about other things. And the peace and unity resolution being denied last meeting just as a law itself. A diverse community like this taking one side, especially when that's the side of a settler state, is literally ignoring one part of its residents and deeming that what they're going through is inferior. And one of the other speakers on this meeting also said that we're not all equal and what we're going through is not all equal. You know what? You're right. Because when you look at the numbers of Palestinians and when you look at the numbers of Israelis and how long this has been going on for either side, you can literally see that we're not equal. You can see that Palestinians are, their death toll is almost reaching ten thousand, almost reaching ten thousand. And you can see that, you're right, we're not equal. As Teneck residents ourselves, we're living on the land of the Native American tribe of the Lenape. History and stories of settlement and colonization are present in our everyday lives. So how can we residents of this country, of this town, literally who recognize genocide of Native Americans, literally supported genocide and ethnic cleansing happening in Palestine right in front of our eyes? I cannot believe that the last resolution passed only looked at one side and totally ignored the other. I hope that we're able to pass the peace and resolution, the peace and unity resolution in this meeting. Thank you.
Rena Sadai, please unmute, state your name for the record. Rena, please unmute, state your name for the record.
Can you hear me?
Yes, loud and clear, three minutes.
Awesome. Hi, my name is Renee Saada. I just want to address a couple of things, right? Were a couple anti-Palestinian and Islamophobics made. First of all, there was no protest that you guys claimed that said that there was, that's all Jews and whatever nonsense you were kind of spewing, right? But I did see with my eyes, I seen a lady outside saying, "No ceasefire", which she is promoting, yes, that she wants the death of the Gazans, right? But let's let's go beyond that, right? We're talking about the people in Teneck. And you guys keep going back to that. Your your whole, your whole sadness and whole, you know, you guys' thing started October seventh, sure, right now. Our started before October seventh, our started, you know, seventy-five years ago. We're just going to ignore that part, right? No problem. Let's talk about Teneck. Last, last council meeting we had, especially Goldman, especially Councilman Goldman, which he already proven to be anti-Palestinian, Islamophobic, biased, right? And she's showing her racism. We're going to state that her little resolution passed. You disappointed the people in Teneck. You disappointed all of us. But how about make it right? Make it right for the people here in Teneck. Make it right for us. We are done with the hatred that Zionists have already portrayed. You guys have heard it with your own ears. And yes, I do condemn the IDF, and I condemn Zionism. I can say that. And it always will be a free Palestine, and from the river to the sea. That is the end of mine. Thank you very much.
There we go. That was about to happen.
Yeah, of course it will.
Leet Mufada, please unmute, state your name for the record. Leet?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, loud and clear, three minutes.
Hi, my name is Leet Mufada. I am a Teneck resident. I just, this is actually going to be pretty short. First of all, I just want to say thank you to the council members. I do not envy the impossible position that you are all in, trying to manage the emotions and feelings and expectations of everyone in the community. I thank you for doing the best you can. I know that you're never going to be getting everyone happy. But I also just want to say, as a Jewish resident of the community, I'm just hearing that there's a lot of people like in a lot of pain. And I think that it's not about like antisemitism or Islamophobia. It's about everyone just being able to hear each other's pain. And I just felt that that was important to recognize. So that's all I had to say.
Rebecca Applebaum. Rebecca, please unmute, state your name for the record, three minutes.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Applebaum. I live on Sherman. I moved to Teneck four years ago because I felt like it was a place where I could find an Orthodox community, Jewish community, sorry, but still integrate into a larger diverse community. I have found small spaces where I can do that, and I'm grateful. I want to thank all the people who've been working behind the scenes to make connections and those that have been braving the vitriol of the Facebook groups to build bridges in this town, especially in the past few weeks. I signed in late, but the first speaker I heard was my sister-in-interfaith Cheryl Hall. And I need to give her a shout out and chizuk, or strength, as is said in Hebrew, for her never-ending work to bring this town together. There is so much heart in this town, but hearts are getting heavy. I'm a member of the Jewish community in this town, but I hesitated to support the original, the original resolution because the impact that it might have had on this town hurt my heart. At the same time, though, I feel it is so important for people to make the effort to understand why it felt essential to members of the Jewish community that there would be a resolution that held the Jewish community as its focus. The collective trauma, historical trauma that Jewish people all of our experiencing in present times is too deep to explain in a few words. We feel very alone. A resolution that would give Jewish people its focus would go a long way to making us feel not alone. But I also heard many Muslims in our community saying that they feel alone. I think it is so important for myself and others to try and understand why it would hurt so much that the resolution did not mention the loss of so many Palestinian lives. Antisemitism and Islamophobia place a constant weight on so many people living in this town. And words of impact are both good and bad. I heard members from both communities saying that they felt left out, they feel alone, and they feel silenced. I think our collective goal at this point should not be to convince anyone as to which resolution was better or more appropriate. We need to stop debating. We need to listen to people's feelings. Many people's feelings, many people are feeling fear. Many people are feeling misjudged. Many people are feeling ignored and unacknowledged. Can we come to a place where we can acknowledge that of each other? I think we'll find more of our humanity in common than we realize because we're saying the same feelings. And it's not about comparing who's our more or less, just acknowledging that we have them. This will take effort. This will take stepping out of our comfort zones. People mention spaces where there are those trying to have these conversations. Teneck Women Together, Cheryl Hall, and all her interfaith work. I urge people to join those spaces and try to have these conversations and really listen. That's all. Thank you.
Saidi Qureshi, please unmute, state your name for the record.
I am Saidi Qureshi. I have been resident of Teneck more than two decades. And I have been promoting Jews, Jewish and Christian and Muslims working together. And after this incident, this crisis, October seventh, that I have been working so that Muslims and Jews in all those areas where they work together. So they focus on serving the community rather than the differences. But there, all the rabbis and all other leaders, and we agree that there is space for working together and there is a space for having difference of opinion. And today I am talking in a space where we share our differences of opinion. What I would like to say that I am very disappointed today more than October seventeenth. That when one resolution was passed and the other one, that was not even considered. And if I compare October seventeenth and today, that that day, that resolution was passed without tabling, without listening to the community. But today, that that resolution was tabled, and it was said that we have to listen to the community. And that is discrimination. The other thing is that in their resolution, the number of people that who were affected, that it was mentioned in detail. But in this resolution, that there was no number that who have been killed. Those, those kids and the women and all of them, that no mention. And we are standing on the wrong side today. That UNO a few days ago, that a hundred and twenty countries against fourteen countries, they stood up and spoke against the atrocities that Israel has been committing. And they are asking Israel for ceasefire and humanitarian aid for them. But we are standing against the UNO's resolution today. And we are not asking that for that humanitarian aid. And I would like to mention that some people, they are talking about Israel's right to defend itself. I would like to say that during Holocaust, our Jewish brothers and sisters, that they had the right of defense, but did not have power that day. And Nazis, they did to our Jewish brothers and sisters what they did. And today, sadly, Israel is doing the same thing. There are a hundred and forty-four.
Thank you, Mr. Qureshi. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
David Shapiro, please unmute, state your name for the record.
David Shapiro, I've been a resident of Teneck for forty-eight years. I want to first thank the, the council for the resolution on the seventeenth. I think it needed to stand alone due to the atrocities that occurred in Israel on October seventh. I want to, um, I want to also tell, uh, some of my sadness that I have felt over the past several weeks is I have heard very few of our Muslim neighbors stand up and condemn what Hamas has done. Uh, and I do appreciate hearing that, uh, this evening, um, some of our Muslim neighbors standing up and saying that Hamas's atrocities, um, should not have taken place. Uh, I do want to correct, um, several individuals here who have spoken about the fact that this has been going on for seventy-five years. Uh, it's been going on for longer than seventy-five years, but going back seventy-five years, uh, nineteen forty-eight, when Israel declared into, um, themselves a state, um, they were partitioned. It was partitioned by the United Nations. Um, part of Israel went to, um, um, Muslims and part to the Jews. Uh, the Muslims did not like that. They attacked Israel and they lost. Again, in nineteen sixty-seven, um, the Muslims, the Arabs attacked Israel and they lost. Again, in seventy-three, the Arabs attacked Israel and they lost. Uh, Israel, um, then gave back the Gaza Strip. No questions asked, asked, and what happens? They brought in Hamas to rule, um, to rule Gaza. Uh, we're not occupiers. Israel is not occupiers. We do not occupy Gaza. Um, we never have anything going on in Gaza, except we do have to control our borders. Uh, you want to go back seventy-five years? Yes, that's when the Arabs started war with Israel and it has continued to this day. There is no ceasefire until Hamas is gone because Israel cannot afford to sit back and let Hamas rearm and do this again. Anything that's happening right now in Gaza, unfortunately, is the fault of Hamas and anyone who ignores that is, is ignoring the facts and has their head in the ground. Um, um, Hamas has been hiding underneath, um, hospitals, schools, um, um, and mosques. You want to talk about war crimes? That alone is a war crime. And I will stop my comments there. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Shapiro. And we are over the two-hour mark. I would really like to hear what council has to say and vote. Uh, Mr. Schwartz, was that a motion you made to call?
That is a motion. I thank everyone for dialing in. I'd like to make a motion to close Good and Welfare at this time.
Second.
Clerk, roll call.
Councilman Schwartz?
Yes.
Councilman Belcher?
Yes.
Councilman Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Oregon?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Katz?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor G?
No.
Mayor Pagan?
Yes, and now we will hear from Councilman Mr. Schwartz. Would you like to start us off, sir?
Yes, thank you very much. Uh, thank you for everyone for dialing in. Um, I have a lot to say, but I, I think we, we've heard some very balanced opinions tonight and I really don't want to belabor it. Um, I'm thankful for everyone that called in on both sides. I, I will say I'm pretty upset with, um, Rena Rajah, Rena Sadeh, who I normally actually think lives in Teneq when she said that from the river to the sea, we're talking peace and unity. And she felt there it's always gonna be from the river to the sea, which, um, refers to the Jordan River, to the Mediterranean Sea, and the only thing in between is Israel. Um, so it's hard to have a serious conversation about unity and peace when, um, things like that are being said, but thankfully that was not the case for virtually everyone. To that end, I just wanted to, um, I hope, I pray for peace and unity in the world, in the town. Oh, world free of, uh, terrorism, schools free to hate, colleges free of hate. I hope our students can go on to, to better this world. And I thank the councilwoman for putting forward this peace and unity resolution. And, um, again, hope for peace across the nation and the world. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Schwartz. Ms. Belcher?
I want to thank my neighbors for calling in and patiently, um, expressing their thoughts and opinions. I think it's very important. Um, I just want to, uh, state that I do feel the unimaginable pain that my, my neighbors are experiencing who have ties to both Israel and Gaza. The state of affairs of our beloved township has been hard to explain in the, in the past few, uh, days and weeks. What I do know, however, with certainty is that terrorism attack uh, and war crimes against innocent people are abhorrent and must be condemned. There must be a humanitarian solution to support a way to protect those that are trapped in Gaza and the safe return of all hostages. My support of the resolution on October seventeenth council, council meeting, um, in support of Israel and the condemnation of Hamas, as well as the pending passage of the peace and unity resolution is reflective of the diverse beauty that Teneq represents. Two things can be true at the same time. I have compassion for the Israeli mother who is praying for the return of her family. And I have compassion for the Palestinian mother who's trying to keep her child alive. We can say that we condemn terrorism and at the same time, we can say we condemn war crimes. Two things can be true at the same time. Yes, words matter, but I submit to you, innocent lives matter more. There must be a humanitarian solution to provide aid to innocent Palestinian lives in Gaza. As of yesterday, the United Nations reports that over seventy-seven hundred Palestinians have been killed since the Israeli bombing campaign began and more than nineteen thousand seven hundred and forty are injured. I believe there must be a humanitarian pause so that innocent Palestinians can safely escape the war. In nineteen sixty-four, Teneq made a decision to stand on the right side of history. Uh, during that time, we made a decision to integrate our school system. We had our parents and grandparents who were brave, courageous men and women. They spoke truth to power. They stood up for injustice, hatred and inequality and disenfranchised people. They stood on the right side of history. Will our children say the same about us? There is absolutely, positively no room for hate, racism, Islamophobia or antisemitism in Teneq. Um, we are in a position right now to vote on a resolution. After we vote this resolution, let us not retreat back into our silos. Let us not ignore our neighbors' pain. Let this be an opportunity to come together for us to find ways to dialogue with, with each other, not fear one another. And lastly, by passing this resolution tonight, we become purveyors of peace and champions of unity, justice and reconciliation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Belcher. Ms. Oregon?
I want to thank everyone who called in tonight, um, mostly respectful and heartfelt, no matter, um, what you're feeling, um, we're happy to listen to you. I also, normally we, we thank people for coming out to our meetings tonight. I want to thank everyone who stayed home. Um, I know it felt a little bit like our town was under siege and our library was closed and our parking lot was closed. Um, but I, I really do thank everyone that, um, may have wanted to come out um, and did not add fuel to something that fizzled out. I hope that this will lead to the end of outside, um, agitators coming into our town and drowning out our voices with their chants. I hope that that is behind us. I hope any violence towards us or our police officers is behind us. And once again, I want to thank, um, Chief Maghr and the Teneq Police and the county and the state and everybody who, um, keeps us safe. I think that is our, our utmost priority here, no matter what is going on. And of course, I want to thank Dean for everything that he does for us always. I think, um, we have a very big responsibility in town now in how we are educating our children. I think what's going on in the colleges right now sheds light on, um, how these stories are being explained to our children and the facts that they're learning. I'm, I'm very happy that, um, teenagers, um, Muslim and Jewish are getting together to tell their stories. But I, I do hope that the schools here are seeing this, are seeing what's going on in the colleges and are, are taking extra steps to expand the curriculum so that people can really get an understanding of, of everything that's going on both sides and they can move off to college peacefully because it's terrifying right now. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oregon. Ms. Goldberg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, first I want to thank everyone for participating. Um, I hope that all-
Or your mic's not working.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I see you're unmuted, but I'm not hearing anything come out.
Hold on. Can you hear me now?
Oh, yeah, a little bit. Can you turn her up, Ron? Give me another one, too.
One, two?
Nice, perfect.
Thank you. Um, I want to thank everyone for coming out to participate tonight. Um, I hope that all of our, all of our residents can live free of fear and feel safe as they walk down the street, as they go to the grocery store, as they go to their houses of worship, no matter their race, religion, nationality, creed, gender, sexual orientation. But here we are on Zoom. I'm happy to hear that there are no protesters outside today chanting for genocide. I'm horrified to hear said genocidal words mentioned at a Teneq Township Council meeting. Let me unequivocally say that my opinion as an individual is that from river to sea is hate speech. As we talk about peace and unity, genocide has no place under peace. I hope that soon both Israel and Gaza will be free of Hamas and Hamas frees all of the hostages. I would like to state that I fully support the Township Manager Dean Kozinski and reiterate that I commend him for his swift and unbiased statement to the town on Nixal on October seventh. I heard a resident talk tonight about how her own child is afraid. My son has been afraid, afraid to sleep in his own house and continues to be afraid as he sleeps at his grandparents' house. So I want to make sure that our residents know that I have full faith in our police department, state and federal law enforcement. I would also like to encourage residents to apply to the Advisory Board of Community Relations as there are openings so we can appoint them with a task to work on the much-needed community relations in this town. Lastly, I would like to personally thank Cheryl Hall for your incredibly hard work to this township, for your friendship and your allyship. I will always support peace and unity and work to ensure peace and unity is preserved for every resident, no matter who you are. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goldberg. Mr. Katz?
Thank, thank you for all that spoke out tonight. Can you hear me okay, Mayor?
Yes, sir, loud and clear.
Excellent. Thank you for all that spoke out tonight. I'm still very sad by the divisions of the town tonight. Historically, I've always been opposed to these national and international symbolic resolutions since while all of the causes are important, I'm a firm believer that local council chambers should focus, focus on local issues. I'm hopeful that, and I hope some of my colleagues join me, we can resume to that position after tonight. I recognize that there are many residents in the community that don't feel that this council cares about them. This resolution, while it may not be perfect to some, will hopefully start that healing process and is incumbent upon every resident in our great town of Teneq to work hard to stay, to start that unity process. Antisemitism should never be considered free speech and we as a community cannot and should not remain silent when we hear it. Teneq is famously known as a safe home for all cultures, races and religions. We embrace our differences. I understand the passions and feelings are very high now, but I do believe that there's more that we have in common than the differences. And my goal and objective is to try to keep our community united. And that always starts with proper communication and a lot of hard work. We are neighbors. We're a community. We live harmoniously with each other. And yes, sometimes we do disagree with each other, but what family doesn't disagree sometimes? Sadly, things are going to get worse before they get better internationally. Tomorrow, we're still gonna be, continue to be neighbors and a community, regardless of your international position and feelings. I feel it is our responsibility and of every Teneq community member and our leaders to try to keep our community together and to make sure that everybody feels comfortable. Every resident feels welcome, every resident feels respected and every resident feels safe in our great town of Teneq. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Katz. Ms. G?
Thank you for everyone who called in. Um, I really appreciate hearing from all of you. I wanted to address a couple of questions. Um, one came from Yaseen asking how many people would have to be lost for their lives to matter? I want you to know that everyone, every innocent life mattered to me. I was comfortable passing the resolution on the seventeenth as it was written, um, but unfortunately I couldn't get unanimous, unanimous support for that version of the resolution. Um, the other point I wanted to specifically call out was, um, the wearing of threatening or hateful messages on clothing in our schools. Um, my colleague just said hate speech has no place here in Teneq. I wholeheartedly agree, wholeheartedly agree with her. And certainly has no place in chambers. It certainly has no place in our schools. And I hope, um, my fellow colleagues would agree that, you know, we as, um, citizens in Teneq who represent all residents, past and present, should not be wearing hateful messages on their clothing. Finally, I just want to share, um, you know, as an African-American woman who is neither Jewish or Muslim, what I've tried to do over the last three weeks is just listen. Listen, listen and listen. I do not have lived experiences that a lot of my resident, fellow residents have, um, as it relates to what's been happening in Israel and Gaza. Um, I don't understand a lot of the reactions to what have, you know, what has been going on. But what I try to do is listen and listen and listen to the lived experiences of my peers. And every time I do that, I learn a bit, a little bit more, a little bit more about their perspective. It might not make sense to me at first, but when I listen, I start to learn a little bit more. And so I ask all of you, all my fellow residents of Teneq, just listen to each other, listen to your neighbors. Take a step back from what makes sense to you, what feels so right to you and just listen, try to understand the other perspective. And it's not just two sides. There are so many layers to this. It really goes beyond that. And so I, I, my hope is that we as a, as a community can listen to each other and really try to promote peace and, and healing as, you know, was the goal of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. G. I just want to say thank you to all of our residents for participating tonight and thank everyone on council and staff for working on this resolution. And now we are ready to move on to the next order of business unless someone on council has something else to add before we move on to the consent agenda.
Um, so I'd like to move, oh, da, da, like to motion to move, uh, from the table, the, uh, unity resolution.
Second.
Move Resolution two seven six dash twenty twenty-three that we spoke about earlier from the table. We had a first from Deputy Mayor G, second from Councilwoman Belcher, Councilman Schwartz?
Yes.
Councilman Belcher?
Yes.
Councilman Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Oregon?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Katz?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor G? Mayor Pagan?
Yes.
Motion approved, removed from the table?
Now I'd like to move that we vote on that resolution.
Second.
Councilman Schwartz?
Yes.
Councilman Belcher?
Yes.
Councilman Goldberg?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Oregon?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Katz?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor G?
Yes.
Mayor Pagan?
Yes.
Resolution two seven six dash twenty twenty-three adopted.
Our next order of business is our consent agenda and all matters listed on the agenda are considered to be routine in nature by council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If any discussion is desired by council, that particular item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Mr. Clerk, please read the amount of the bill, listen to the record.
Absolutely. And again, council, just to reiterate what the mayor said, that's Resolution two seven four, Resolution two seven five dash twenty twenty-three, and the bill lists the amount of one million, six hundred twelve dollars, nine hundred fifty-nine dollars. And ninety-three cents.
Second.
Oh, move second by Mayor Pagan, Councilman Schwartz?
Yes. Bill number twenty-three dash zero four four eight, the amount of one hundred and five dollars to the Jewish in New Jersey Republicans.
Got it. Councilman Belcher?
Yes.
Councilman Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilman Oregon?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Katz?
I'm staying on the, uh, bill list.
Deputy Mayor G?
Yes.
Mayor Pagan?
Yes.
All adopted.
And if not mistaken, Mr. Clerk, that concludes our business. So I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, for participating tonight. We hope you have a safe evening.